Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Tuesday Work Session August nineteenth, twenty twenty. And I've asked Commissioner Clark. No idea. I asked Commissioner Swift if he would lead us in our education and Commissioner Duncan to lead the pledge. Keep the sample of food.
Father, we thank you for this wonderful place in which we live. We thank you for our educators and teachers who are leading as school comes back into session. And thank you, Lord, as we see fall weather maybe in a distant sight but coming. And Father, we pray that we make decisions good in your eyes. Amen.
Let it be the pledge of the United States of America. Into the Republic from which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And today we have three items on our work session. The first one is to receive a presentation from the St. Thomas' Boating and Fishing Club Financials. And Mr. Collins is going to give that to us. And if you want to come forward, Mr. Collins. And if you would, state your name for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Clint Collins. I am the Vice President and speaking captain for the St. Thomas' Boating and Fishing Club. Does business at the St. Thomas' Marine. How's everyone doing this afternoon? I'm just tickled to be here presenting to you guys again. We have a lot to talk about, I think. So if the Commission has any suggestion on where to start, or I can just sort of take you through our general update that I provided last week. And with that, the main update from our side, you know, I think we all know the repairs are coming and the Marina's operations are going to be starting and have been over the past few months. We can get all that. But for an operational update, when we met with the Commission last year in several small groups and at this meeting last year, we discussed ways in which the Marina could increase its revenue. With the Commission's guidance and looking to our patrons and the community in general, we sought to do a number of things. One thing we did is we raised rates. And we tried to make those rate increases disproportionately high for the membership. And if the Commission will remember, we offer public launching, we offer, you know, public services, we do offer memberships. The membership of the Marina allows for patrons to get onto the wet and dry storage list and provides a small discount to users that are launching their boats or keeping their boats overnight. So when we looked at rate increases, we wanted to make sure that those rate increases affected mostly the membership. Because those are the people that are using the Marina day in and day out. And the scheme that we came up with that the Commission approved last year was basically a doubling of all of our membership rates. We went up on our general rates, I think, about twenty-five percent and about a hundred percent on the membership rates. So that includes our membership. Dry storage for both large and small boats and the wet monthly long-term storage. With that, we implemented the rate increases January first. We operate on the same fiscal calendar that the county does. But for most of our membership and rate changes, we institute those on a calendar year basis. So January first of this year, we instituted rate changes, doubling the membership fees, doubling the storage rates, and all the other increases the county approved. The sum total of that was, has been a sixty-three percent increase in revenue over the first half of this year. Which is very impressive, I guess. It certainly is noteworthy. In that, in February, we received the EMC updated report that required us to curtail our options and ultimately shut down a portion of our operations. The public launch is still available, it's still operating, but we're operating kind of one thing on one foot. So a majority of that rate increase is that we continue to charge users for the wet and dry storage. Our membership rates went up. We've seen a slight decrease in memberships. Our thinking on that was that for someone to join the Marina as a member, it's a financial decision more than anything. If you use the Marina to launch your boat, it was previously about ten times, now it's about fifteen times. Then it pays for itself to join. So we knew that we would lose some members. We figured if we lost half, we would still end up breaking even. And I think as of, as of last month's meeting, we were down maybe thirty members. So I think we're sitting right around two hundred and forty members. So all of that is to say, revenue is a substantial amount, sixty-three percent. As a part of our discussions with the county last year, it became apparent that we needed to really reconsolidate some of our contractor services. So we have one employee and we have, he runs, he previously ran ice, bait, gas, you know, all the amenities and would kick us back some of that revenue. We've kind of flipped everything on its head and we take in all revenue and then have increased his salary. So our net expenses are up considerably with that as well. For example, we have cost of goods sold of forty-four thousand dollars for this year for fuel. That's a line item that we have not had before. So all in, and the numbers are not terribly indicative of any future performance because we're operating on, you know, six months of rate increases with four of those months operating at half capacity or less. So we only expect those numbers to go up. And yes, y'all need me to click through anything? How about that? There we go. Those are the numbers I've been talking about. All right, so.
May I interrupt?
Absolutely, Commissioner Duncan.
So you have two hundred and forty members. They receive a modest discount on services because they pay a membership and they're frequent users.
Correct.
Presumably, that's just really a volume discount.
Correct.
So I'm not a member, but I am a boater and a fisher. So if I were able to join the club, not store my boat there, because I've got a good place to store mine. But if I go to purchase other services other than a launch, as a non-member, I could go one or two times or as many as I want. But as a member, if I go a lot of times, then there would, as you say, be some financial advantage to the membership.
Correct.
Is there any limitations on membership?
There are not.
Okay, so you could, you could double your membership if the fishers and boaters wanted to join.
Correct. We, so we, this is a question that we deal with a lot. The membership is open to anyone. Walk in the Marina, fill in a membership application and pay your membership fee. It's two hundred dollars now. It was previously a hundred. And that gets you ten dollars off on a launch and eight dollars off a night on overnight dockage. So depending on how often you use the Marina, you know, if you're just using it for launches, if you use it twenty times a year, pays for itself. Otherwise, it's better to not. And again, the, the best way that we've seen fit to maintain a list for our wet and dry storage, which are finite and they're commodities that people want. The best way we've seen fit is to make the application to be on that list contingent on being a member. That way, we are sure that it's, you know, local folks that are going to use boats and we don't have folks from Alaska putting their name in to have a slip at the Marina. Because at the end of the day, we are for the public, but we have to have revenue to operate. And we need to know that the people that are occupying the Marina are also using it and, you know, buying ice and bait and gas and launching and things like that.
And just one general, one other general question is, what would you consider the demand in terms of your capacity to serve? For example, as we've got two hundred and forty members, not everybody launches on a Saturday or a Friday, for example. But you've got a finite number of wet slips, for example.
Correct.
And of those, are we eighty percent occupied or?
The wet slips are a hundred percent occupied and there's a marginal waitlist on that. Typically, there's some seasonality to it. So we typically see some turnover in the spring. Folks that have decided they're not going to use their boats as much anymore. And then there's always more folks that are looking to use their boats. On the dry storage, that's a little bit more of a complicated analysis. As the Commission is properly aware, we are not utilizing the North Rail at the Marina currently. That's part of what EMC directed that we shouldn't be using before the structural upgrades are made. So we were at a hundred percent occupancy on the inside of the barn. When we shut down the use, we stopped taking, we have continued to put people on the list, but we stopped filling those spots. So there, we are not at a hundred percent occupancy, but there is a waitlist on that. So once the repairs are done, we'll refill based on the, based on the current waitlist. And we've got some plans to get that list situated and make sure that the people are ready to go for when the Marina does reopen. And we'll be, when we're shut down, we'll be charging about fifty percent for just storage inside of the barn and we won't be charging for our wet slips. So we figure if they can't use it, we can't charge it. So, but as to your original question, the hundred percent full on the wet slips, small waitlist there. I'd say that that waitlist is a year, but mostly because of the one season kind of turnover. On the barn side, we have two categories of slips. We have boats up to twenty-two feet and then boats up to twenty-seven feet. For the smaller slips, that is typically a hundred percent occupied with a small waitlist. Previous missions have had critiques about how long our waitlist had gotten through the mid-two thousands. It got to be, you know, kind of, kind of a long one. And we're happy that that waitlist has gotten down to, you know, less than a year.
And that's based just on the churn of members?
That's correct. That's right.
And just by contrast, I know of two other Marinas that I have had a relationship with in the past. A good friend of mine is still a tenant at one. And it's a three-year waitlist for that one. And that's another place to store boats on St. Thomas' Island. So at the, at this Marina, it's basically a one-year churn. So there's enough in and out of activity that someone that would sign out today potentially could be able to rent a space within a year.
That's correct. And it's, it is cyclical. So, you know, there will be times in the future, I'm sure, where, right now, we're seeing a lot of younger people getting boats in there. So the turnover, you know, may stall in the future. And then you bring up a good point, just for transparency, you know, it's not all sunshine and rainbows. Part of the reason that we, we have full occupancy, but we don't have that five, ten-year waitlist anymore is our capacity is capped for most of the dry storage at twenty-two feet. And boats are just getting bigger now. So there, there's a finite amount of people that have boats that are, you know, in the eighteen to twenty-two foot range. And that's something that we're constantly looking for solutions on how to get, you know, the typical small kind of family boat these days is really in the twenty-two to twenty-six foot range. And so we have tried and will continue to try to get creative to not sacrifice space, but accommodate larger boats, all in the context of not having to tear down the whole barn to redo it. So, you know, it's an interesting proposition.
I have one of those little boats.
Come on. So Commissioners, that's, yes, absolutely.
Couple of things.
Yes, sir.
When this first came up, I guess came before us where I, I think, where I knew what this was. This was probably in my second term. There were a number of people who didn't realize this was a public facility. And that was a great concern to me. It's, people on the mainland, and I'm sure you all have, have members that are from the mainland.
Correct.
But, but understanding that this was not something owned by you all, it's owned by the taxpayers. Am I correct?
Correct.
And so my concern was, how do you market to the whole community? And, and for membership, which it seems like is capped right now because of the capacity of the space the Marina there. And, but I still would like to know, how do you market toward for the entire community? Because I really don't think a lot of people understand that this is county property. And while I don't own the boats, I don't, I'm still trying to get somebody to teach me how to fish. It's, it's very important. When we were looking at things about the Coast Guard, the surf sailors, also for many years, they controlled a piece of property that was taxpayer-owned but operated like it was theirs. And even with this property, there were a lot of boats that were stored for a long time, from my understanding. The pictures that I saw from the Commissioner at that time, which pushed for more transparency and for cleanup of the site. So I don't know, has the site been cleaned up as far as boats been stored there for years? And where is that? But I would like to know, how do you market to the whole community? And then, I don't know how that would work if you're at capacity. So the people who are in, it's kind of like Oak on the Island about development. You know, they want to manage it, some on the socket. And I get that because I go over there when it's in the morning, there's a lot of traffic. And I understand that. But I would like to know how you all market it to the entire community, other taxpayers? And how do you get around this if it's capped right now? Does that, the capacity of the Marina make it a private, sort of exclusive club just by the storage capacity? And how would we get around it? So you may not be able to answer that right now, but I would like to know.
I'll try.
All right.
Those are great questions. So one clarification, and that is, you know, the idea of membership. Memberships are not capped. But you're correct, membership is, is something that we require to get on the list for the storage. So membership's not capped, the storage is not capped. The physical storage is capped by the amount of boats that we can store. But we maintain a list of people and, you know, rotating. That list to us is pretty much actuarial. We keep it with our treasure and he just goes from one to the next. And so as boats become available, or slips become available, we call the next person on the list. I think here it is at least noteworthy that it's not all St. Thomas'. It's not all St. Simon's, you pointed out correctly, uh and I think you know. I'm a member that lives on the mainland, um, there are other members that live on the mainland. It's a pretty diverse group of people, but we also have members that uh hail from Tifton, Augusta, Atlanta, uh all over the state. And and some out-of-state folks, most of those have some connection with the island or Glen County, they they come down. Um, but as to the marketing question, that is something that uh. It it was shocking to me, having grown up here, that so many people didn't know. And this was, I think, seven or eight years ago, that that we were having these first discussions, uh for the first time in a long time with the commission. And it was shocking and a little bit off-putting that um, so many people were not aware that it was a public Marina. So, what we did then is we updated our signage, um, we got on the county's website. The county has continued to increase signage, I I notice about once a year, there's some some big new signs out front. That say, you know, St. Simon's Marina, a public facility, um, and and we. We advertise in that way through the county, um, we also. Have really taken the commission's concerns to heart. We now publish monthly updates, um, to not only our membership, but anyone that that's interested in. And getting those updates, uh we have a listserv that that email goes out once a month. Um, ask people to refer other people to to either come start using the Marina or subscribe to our listserv. Uh, we have.
I I guess that's my um, yeah, I mean, in a rough hope. My concern is, it's it's been, for a long time, it was pretty exclusive. And then, um, word of mouth, you know, has then. Made it more, continue that exclusivity. Um, and um, yeah, I know, we put stuff on the county website. People are visiting that more and more, you know, see a presentation about upgrading that. But but it's a real concern for me, especially when you're saying you got people from Tifton. And um, I know they pay sales tax, they own some property, I hope they do. But if somebody who's a taxpayer here lives here, and they can't get on, but we got people from, I don't know. Um, Montana. Uh, I don't, and I don't know the answer to that, you made that fair, to me, it's 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 not fair. Um, to have those spaces given to somebody that's not a regular, that's doesn't live here, pay taxes and all of that. And and I know that may have been before you got involved with this. Um, for me, but uh, it's um, this was my concern when we, this first came to across our desk. That this was a public Marina, I mean, I had never heard of it, cause I don't uh go over there to fish. Um, and and a lot of my people in my district, you know, we we're on the water. They don't uh, they don't either, I mean, there 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 are probably a number of people that may have smaller boats that do do certain things. Uh, and I don't know how you see that, but I just think I'm bringing it to you, uh you alls, um. Really, to put it on your minds and 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 the commission's minds, um, because um, it's um. I don't know, I don't, I just don't think that's fair. And it seems like we're perpetuating something that may not be uh completely public. Uh, even though we say it's a public Marina.
Yeah, I think that is all completely fair, and so the the way that we have, um, you know, operated. And always open discussions, but the way we've operated is, you know, non-exclusively first come, first served. And uh, I I agree, there there's never gonna be a perfect system to. I I think all of our concerns are are the same, we we wanna provide access to the public. And we want that, we acknowledge that most of that public is needs to be and is going to be. Local folks, and how do you do that? Without becoming exclusive and keep it open to the public, but.
Do you know why the 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 club was created?
I do.
Um, and was it the help with the maintenance or something, or?
So. Back in nineteen forty-nine, um, the commission voted to create the St. Simon's Boating Fishing Club. Well, they voted to build a Marina, so the county funded a Marina, and that was in April nineteen forty-nine. Um, and as that contract to build out the Marina on the property that had been gifted to them. Um, was, contract got approved, and then the county said, okay, well, how are we gonna manage this place? Um, and this was well in advance of advisory panels or advisory committals. Com- committees, um, so the commission sought fit to create. Or have created a uh nonprofit entity, and that was the St. Simon's Boating Fishing Club. So, when that got created, um, the the county tasked it with the management of the Marina that they were constructing. And, you know, just to bring you forward on that, complete the thought. Uh, there's been a number of times throughout the Marina's existence. And there was previously also Brunswick Boating and Fishing Club, um, that. Was turned over to private hands and shut down, but for the St. Simon's Marina. Um, we have had periods of very good communication and and quite frankly, periods of probably very bad communication with the county. We've gone through and we've we've consistently provided, the information the county was requesting. The county has consistently provided um capital improvements to to the Marina and the structures. Um, and, you know, part of that is is why we are where we are today. Um, you know, talking about the the improvements to the Marina, so that was the creation, was to manage.
Was it, was it uh in the bylaws or? Was it open to everybody in the public in nineteen forty-nine?
Correct, it it's uh, so. In nineteen forty-nine when it was created, there was a hundred and nine members, I think. And uh, yeah, I've I've read through some old uh meeting notes, so there were a hundred and nine members. Uh, but the the property was gifted uh with with the contingency that it would be for a public Marina. Uh, and.
There were no restrictions between uh race, um, access at that time in the bylaws.
Not, not in the bylaws, now, as as to the practice, I.
Right, 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 I get you.
It was a different time, and, you know. Well, I I hope that we did not uh discriminate, but, you know. We.
Well, I I guess, and I I'll 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 be done, I, again, that was my concern, and I I think the commissioners. Maintenance, cause there were a lot of old, old boats there, just kind of like a junkyard space. And then, really helping the public, taxpayers, to know that those are public. And again, you all were the only ones, we, you know, we had to deal with this. And it might have been a little worse on the other end, I guess I'll get some calls about that. But uh, I I I had some being to talk with them, um, but um. The property, the public property should be, um, all of us should have access to that. Especially citizens, residents, here, the taxpayers, um, and um, and that was uh my main concern.
Uh, and I couldn't agree more, um, so to that, some of the other things that we've done in addition to the communications. We started an annual fishing tournament, um, just our outreach is trying to grow. We joined Twenty First Century, we have social media now, you know, we advertise there. Uh, so, and for the first time in a number of years, you see an advertising budget in our our numbers. Our advertising expense in our numbers, so we we started more and more outreach. And it's something that we um hope to do more of, or committed to doing more of. And particularly as we uh get into this new era of an updated Marina. We'll be be thrilled to advertise to the commission's hearts' content. Um, and just briefly on the condition of the property, um. The the concern was the storing of trailers, uh more so than boats. And that's something that uh I I think we. We all had just kind of grown accustomed to, and so it it was uh timely to hear those concerns. Since then, we've started twice a year, uh, we've implemented rules, we we don't allow trailers to be there for more than. Uh, five days without written approval. And we've got tags for the trailers to go on now and stuff like that. Um, but in addition, we've started a couple of times a year, uh once in the spring, once in the fall. Putting notice in the newspaper and telling people that they need to come and uh get their trailers off or else we'll get them towed. So, we we have a number towed, um, and I think the commission is probably aware. Uh, with what happens around the McCade Boat Ramp with trailers getting left there. If you've got um, one trailer, they just kind of attract each other, and so it's something that we we have to keep our eye on. And uh, we found that, you know, if we do it about once every, starting process about once every four months. And tow them off every six months, it it keeps it to a manageable um amount. And then, you know, during the holidays, Fourth of July, things like that, it it can get a little overwhelming, but that's more people on the water, which is a good thing, so.
Like the offer coming about the marketing, I would suggest that we don't go overboard with that, no pun intended. But um, I think of it as other sports, um, in my days of playing ball were long behind me. But um, anybody that's active in softball or baseball or pickleball, they know where all the facilities are. And they do, because they're talking to their friends that are engaged in the same sport. Uh, when it comes to boating or fishing or tubing, heaven forbid, I've done that too. Um, we all know where all the public and all the private facilities are in Glen County, because it's part of our hobby. We know that, cause we've talked to others that do the same thing. We don't necessarily look for it on the tourist brochure, we don't look for it in the newspaper, we don't look for it on Facebook. We don't look for it on the county's website, we get that information simply because we're engaged with other people that have like interests. So, I would suggest to you, Clint, that is, as you begin to push forward, to help those who want to know about it. But they probably may have never used the facilities, is just um, tread lightly on that. Because um, not necessarily gonna generate more customers by putting out information out there. And really, what we'd like to do is serve more people who are gonna be paying the user fee for using the facility.
I understand, yeah, and I I think that um. Belies the kind of line-drawing exercise that Commissioner Book talked about, that, you know, awareness is is paramount. We have to make sure that people are aware, and, you know, I think a large part of that is the the word of mouth communication, where can I put a boat in? But uh, I think there is um, there is something to be said for making sure that there is just general awareness. Uh, so, we will, we will certainly take that under advisement, and I'm sure we won't get it exactly right at any point, but we'll keep trying.
Did I, uh, did I understand you to say that y'all don't have any caps on your membership?
That's correct, Commissioner Thompson. We do not, well, we do not offer corporate memberships, but uh, for example, some boats are held in LLC, and the LLC. Is it LLC a county member, or is it an individual? An individual, we do not offer any corporate memberships, Commissioner Thompson.
Do you offer any public service services, uh, do you do anything, and I'm I'm just throwing this out there, uh. Uh, fishing rodeos for kids, or do y'all sma- do y'all do anything like that that would attract more of the uh public to? Uh, St. Simon's Boating Fishing Club and St. Simon's Marina for uh special activities?
So, um.
That would showcase, could showcase the county, um. We do have this facility, and it is available on a regional park, does something such as that with their Marina.
We, nothing to to do with that, you know, we have a a fishing tournament once a year that uh. That is generally about half members and half non-members, but but no real kind of land-based, you know, come and see the Marina, see what it's all about. Um, we we hosted a uh, a couple of town hall meetings this year. Uh, when the repairs were getting talked about, and so that's that's probably about as close as we've come. And then, you know, when there's a uh, like area cleanup, the marsh cleanups. Or as we did last year for the the centennial celebration of the causeway, we'll get a group together and go clean up the. Gas point park and all that stuff, but as far as inviting people in, um, that's something we should definitely look to do and more often.
And lastly, um. You work, does the St. Simon's Boating Fishing Club, do they work with our emergency management, like the jury, uh, hostage stores? Things like that as an access point for uh, people that may or may not need to get on and off the island?
That's, that's a a great point, um, a great question. The, so in the event that the the causeway was closed down, um, the St. Simon's Marina. That and mostly that southern launch would become the primary access point for, you know, boat-based landing. To get power cruisers in or early anybody like that, um, when we've had. So, we ended up coming to the county several years ago because of a couple of hurricanes, uh, and. That really started the conversation with county staff of, hey, you know, if if there is an emergency, you guys. It's your property, don't even ask us, it's here for you guys, um, and thankfully, we we haven't had anything of that nature. Um, but I think the county is aware that it it is available in the event of it's needed, you know, we're always there. And um, I think that was certainly part of the conversation with staff as we went through the requirements. For the the construction of the repairs, um, was making sure that. The Marina could be used as a a wharf in the event that it needed to be, um, so thank you for the question. And and to my mind, we do communicate with the county. Um, honestly, if it's on the edge of an evacuation, I'm probably packing up my dogs and not thinking about the Marina. But uh, it it's certainly part of the conversation, at least on an annual basis.
I think that's something that maybe our uh county manager would probably be involved in. That Marina would stay as a uh. Headquarters for county uh EMAs over on the island, wouldn't bring that access as well.
Yes, sir, and um, that Marina is a county asset, and regardless of the use, rest of the time during a storm event, an emergency event, or a natural disaster. It's it's vital for us to be able to provide services to St. Simon's Island.
I guess defining that, I would wanna say if it is a uh, if we have a, and the governor declares in a state of emergency. Does that Marina convert over to Glen County for those purposes?
Yes.
So, when when that does happen, if per per our rules and, you know, just generally being good stew stewards. Um, when there's a set emergency declared, when there's a main storm that's looking at us, we shut down the Marina. We get every boat off the dock. We shut down the Marina, we get every boat off the docks, even the, the wet source, so they've got to go somewhere else. Um, and we put all the boats in the barn and that place is shut down until the, the state emergency is gone.
Do you have that inter, do you have, um, um. Alternate, uh, energy, uh, electrical sources, do you have generators up there that can re-. Work horse and things like that if boats need to launch or not, or launch or not launch, uh, in an emergency situation?
Uh, we do, yeah, there's, there's enough horsepower in generators to, to run the lifts. Um, and I know last year we had the storm that went through and, um. We were able to, yeah, power was out for most of the island. We were able to, uh, get our power back on through generators and, uh, I, there was a decent fuel shortage. So we have a fuel pump, brand new fuel pump, uh. And we're able to supply residents and, um, locals with fuel while everything was shut down. So that, that was a, a good benefit, you know, we, we just sort of stand ready to.
Y'all doing that through the fishing club, not through Glen County?
That's right, but.
That's the service y'all offer as a membership.
Hope not have to offer it, but yeah, I, you know, we're. I like the thing that we all generally think of ourselves as good neighbors and good community members. And so, you know, whether it's gas or, you know, letting somebody use the freezers or fridge. We're pretty easygoing and good neighbors, I think. I'm sure some people would disagree with that.
Thank you.
Well, Clement, how much, how much staging was done there during the Golden Ring event? The activity that went on as part of, of the Golden Ring dismounting?
I, a lot. So we provided, um, almost exclusively all of the fuel for the boats that were going back and forth to the Golden Ring. Uh, if the commission will remember, the, they had a large barge pulled up. At the airport dock, which is just north of St. Thomas Marina. And they kept a, a fleet of, um, aluminum workboats to take people back and forth. We were going through, uh, and obviously this was in the height of COVID as well. So we were essentially the guys that were working, we were their only point of contact outside of the bubble. That they were sequestered and we provided all of their fuel, um, so for. You know, the better part of two years, we, we helped service that operation. Um, and, you know, of course none of the heavy Marina, uh, heavy machinery or anything like that came through. Cause it's a smaller river, but all those day-to-day workboats were absolutely utilizing the Marina.
Do you have anything else that you want to present? And I'm, I want Mr. Smith to fill in a few blanks, uh.
Commissioners, if y'all are done with me, I'm, I'm happy to, to give it a rest, um, do you want me to say, well?
I, I do have one question for Mr. Colton. Mr. Colton, the recent newspaper article, The Current, there was a, an accusation from a local boater. That, um, non-members are not allowed, allowed to use the dock. Can you comment on that and provide some information on that?
First, I don't know if I can say that in a newspaper, but sure, um. I'm not sure the commission has seen the, the article that Mr. Smith is referencing. Uh, and in that, there was a disgruntled sailboater who. Claims to live on his sailboat, uh, just outside of the Marina. Which is fine, um, and he claims that we have denied him access. And, and some of the comments, uh, on social media, there were, you know, several flavors of that. That people, people said, you know, I, first of all, we don't pretend to be perfect and we, we don't pretend to bat a thousand. Um, but with that, we do have rules and regulations at Marina. So Marina is a public facility, but that doesn't mean unfettered access to anybody at any time. Um, for example, we have hours, uh, and people keep very nice boats down there. Some boats are not so nice, but people's property is attached to those docks. And so we can't have people just coming and going. Uh, similarly, we dispense fuel. We can't provide unfettered, unsupervised access around that fuel tank and that fuel dispenser. So we do have rules and regulations, uh, that we expect the membership to buy by, but also the general public. And you, I don't know when this gentleman tried to, um, come to the Marina and was denied access. I have no doubt that that happened, um, but we are open. Our published hours, I believe, are six AM to five thirty PM. We don't operate as a transient dock, so it's for people to launch and keep their boats overnight. Not to come and go to the grocery store from the boat that they live on. Um, I believe the county has had some problems with people doing the same thing at the Gassoin Dock. Which is just down the way a bit, where people come and tie up to go to the grocery store and, you know, leave their boat for. Who knows how long, um, so, you know. Do things like that happen? Sure, generally it's because it's not, uh, at a time that we're open. Or for a, a boat that we're open for. Uh, I, I think it's also noteworthy that we. I, I think we're all aware that the Marina was substantially damaged in two thousand seventeen and eighteen. Um, that damage was exacerbated because several large boats, we weren't able to get a hold of the owners. Uh, to get them off the dock, you know, just so, Commissioner Thompson, we get everybody off the dock. Well, we weren't able to get a couple of people off the dock. And because of that, the storm pushed the boats, the boats pushed the dock, the dock, the boats pulled the dock. And it just conflated the damage, so we instituted a rule, um, that the county approved. That we don't allow boats over thirty-six feet to, to dock at the Marina. Uh, and so, you know, there's no telling with this gentleman what size boat he had, what he was trying to do or when he was there. Um, it is a public facility, we're, we're happy to have anybody there. Um, like I said, we don't bat a thousand on it, but, uh, you know, by and large. Ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, you get a nice welcoming face out of our manager. Um, and, you know, that's, that's kind of all there is to it.
That being said, uh. Just the manager Smith, uh, I have been receiving calls from the Gassoin Dock of people that are tying up there overnight. And I don't know what the county's ruling on that is. Do you, is, is there a time limit on, on what you can tie up to? I think they're mostly dinghy boats, but. Uh, I have missed, and some, should some signage be in place? Or do we have rulings where you can only tie for a certain amount of time between certain hours, things such as that?
I, I will admit, I don't know the exact timeframe, but, but we do have rulings as far as, um. And Lisa Arganis, our wreck and parks director, has that information, if you allow her, she can provide that.
And, and, and I would think that the same would apply to, uh, our other county facilities, such as your, as, as Marina, uh, would apply.
Correct, correct.
Also, I'd like to, uh, congratulate you, congratulate you on your recent nuptials.
Thanks, Commissioner. It, married life is just thrilling.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioners, anything?
Yeah, uh, Clement, I appreciate you coming today and everything and, uh, you know, you came and sat down with, uh. Multiple groups of us and the commissioners asked you and the club to do some things and you were, uh, open to it. And, um, you know, it's shown sixty-three percent increase, didn't lose as many club members as maybe you thought you would. Um, you know, I'm the commission here and myself, we're all about partnerships. And you've had, your club has had a seventy-six year partnership with the Glen County Board of Commissioners. And, uh, it speaks volumes and, uh, as an avid fisherman, I've seen sadly. In the years since the early seventies, we've lost so many boat ramps that have closed due to, um. Subdivision, whatever it may be, and we're only left with a few that, um. We can go into and launch our boats or put them at a, a ramp, you know? And, uh, so it's very important, I think a lot of people, um, you know, they see a boat ramp or a Marina, they kind of like, well, there's another. But we've lost, we gained boats in this community, but we've lost locations to put them in. And, uh, as a, I put in, I'm on the mainland, I put in at that Marina, me and my dad, uh, quite a few times over the years. And service has always been excellent and, um, everything, and I appreciate, you know, that. And I couldn't help but think, you know, in those seventy-six years, uh, the club, the work that y'all have done. To save the taxpayers.
Sure.
You know, monies that would have probably allocated from previous boards and commissioners. That you and your team and members have come out there and done the back work and saved the taxpayers. Um, you know, and one question I think, um, maybe has come up from staff, if they've got it. You know, um, Rick, you're not going to make money on softball, whether, whatever it is. But Black Island Park, another example. But I can guarantee Lisa Arganis is out there, if she had to take over that Marina tomorrow like she handles, uh, Black Island. Bless her heart, she's got Jesse at home and that, uh, you know, it would impact the taxpayers tremendously on the. Uh, on the front side of that. But, uh, I appreciate y'all's club and everything y'all've done because that goes, uh, a lot of times that's. Not out there and people forget about, you know, what has taken place over the last seventy-six years. And you may have some examples of some of the things that y'all have done. I know you're a big sponsor and work closely with, uh, Leah with Keep Golden Islands Beautiful. And, um, I imagine your club's got a stretch of highway where y'all do different things, but is there any examples? Uh, I, I, Mr. Booker made you pull to a history cap on, maybe there's some examples that y'all have done. Uh, in the past where you stepped up and met the need, uh, for this community.
Yeah, I mean, you, so again, we, we hosted an annual fishing tournament, um, we. We work with a lot of our charter captains to help get free trips or, you know, maybe any trips to, um, other nonprofit groups. Uh, but, yeah, I mean, it, by and large, we, we just serve as a, a spot in the community for, for people to gather. And, and to, um. You know, facilitate things like that, like the fishing charters and, and things like that. And, you know, it's, keeping up the Marina is a full-time job for the Marina. Um, so, you know, our public outreach, our, our public, uh. Benefactor, you know, it could be more, we, we certainly do cleanups, we, you know, try and do our part. Um, but really, you know, making sure the Marina is there, stays on, lights are on. Up early, stay late, um, you know, I, I think it is, at least worth pointing out that. We're the, the first place that's open in the mornings and the last place that's closed in the afternoons and, um. We have it, we have fishing captains that use the Marina to keep their boats. But we also provide the ice bait and fuel for, you know, most of the St. Thomas, Sea Island. And a lot of the Broadway fleet, um, so, you know, if, if you show up at five thirty in the morning. Uh, you'll see a line of guys who pick up boats, getting their bait to go to Hampton or Sea Island, um.
They've never done that.
And, you know, that's, that's really where we see our benefit is, um. Keeping the, the traditions of the island alive, the, the traditions of the county alive. And, and being that kind of one respite of traditional, you know, whole Glen County that, that survives.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clement. Uh, Ms. Arganis, would you come answer Commissioner Thompson's question if you could? And also if you could give us, uh, I think you did a, a, a cost analysis of what it would take Glen County, your favorite, running that.
Commissioner, y'all had enough of me?
Yeah, I have one question if you don't mind, sticking around after Lisa.
Good, good afternoon, Commissioners, Lisa Arganis, Recreation Parks Director. So yes, to answer your question, um, at Gassoin Park, uh, pier, there is a two-hour limit for vessels. To be docked at that dock, uh, the pier, I think is a dawn to dusk pier. Um, we have had issues over the years with, um, dinghies being parked up from, from probably some of the boats out in Frederick River. Um, our, the issue is we don't staff that park, it's not a staffed park, so we don't have anybody there. In the early morning hours when the dinghy might arrive and in the evening hours when the dinghy might, the dinghy owner might go back to their boat. So we don't, we feel certain there are boats that are violating that rule and it is posted as you walk onto the dock. That there's a two-hour limit, but, um, we just don't have any staff that can sit out there for ten to twelve hours while, to, to capture them. In the early morning when they arrive or in the evening. A couple of years ago, there was a sailboat that had, um, I think it had gotten loose somewhere and it was lodged up under. One of the bridges there, the, um, in, close by the park and it was towed over to Gassoin and it remained there for several days. I was able to meet with that owner of that boat with the Glen County Police Department, um, officer. And we addressed the issue with that person and told her she could not be at the dock. That was an actual sailboat, not a dinghy. She was there because she was a disabled vessel and she removed it a couple of days later. Dinghies are, are difficult for sure, but there is a sign, two hours, um.
All right, thank you. Commissioner, I have the information. So the count, Glen County did a study as to what it would cost for us to operate that, that Marina internally. Uh, the, the initial estimate for startup was four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. And then an annual cost to operate similar to what the club does would be four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. And this, this information was provided to, uh, media as well. Clement, my question, um, what is the current rent that the club pays Glen County in the annual cost?
Uh, I believe we're up to twenty-five thousand dollars a year.
All right, and I'm, I'm barely due to this role, uh, did, wasn't there a change in that not too long ago?
There was, so we were at one dollar a year, uh, which I think is kind of the token, you know, public, private, um, lease amount. Uh, and then two thousand eighteen, I think we jumped up to a thousand dollars and then, um. The repairs for the Marina are no shock to the, the commission, I'm sure. It's a conversation we've been having for, I think, three years now that the repairs would need to be a little bit more robust. Uh, and that it might exceed what the Marina could do. And with that in mind, we, you know, we're. We acknowledge that the rent needed to go up, will likely need to go up again after the repairs. Um, and as just sort of a token of our willingness to cooperate. Uh, last year, we jumped from a thousand to twenty-five thousand. Um, and this year, we're, we're paying that in quarterly installments because we will shut down. Hopefully sooner than later, um, I, I think we're probably looking at a November, December shutdown. Where we will essentially, not essentially, we won't have any revenue other than limited storage revenue. Um, and just need to manage our cash flow so that, uh, we can survive, make sure that we can contribute. And live to, live by another day.
Thank you.
And Danny, when, when are the projected start and finish steps?
The, the project is starting, we're currently in the design and permitting phase, um. We anticipate November, December, having the, uh, permits from the two regulatory agencies, Army Corps of Engineers. And Georgia DNR, that will allow construction to actually start.
Length of time or is there a judge?
Approximately six months, hope to be shorter than six months, okay?
Danny, could you, uh, help?
Speak in the microphone, please.
I'm sorry, uh, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Danny, if you could look at, can you give us the numbers of what it costs now for us to operate the Marina with the help of the, uh, club?
Well, we do not, we don't have a cost. The county does not because we've leased that facility to the club. And so we generate revenue currently as opposed to having a cost to operate.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, anything else, Commissioners?
Commissioner Neal, if I might add, um, you know, the cost of the, to, to do the reconstruction rehab of the Marina is five million dollars. And that's two point three. And that's two point three million of that is coming from the Golden Ray settlement. And the remaining two point seven is coming from the accommodation excise tax.
And that's been made available to the board as well. Yes, thank you. Anything else?
No, sir.
Alright, I think, uh, we've ridden this horse till he's worn out, so thank you.
Commissioners, we look forward to working further with the county as the improvements get underway. Um, myself, Joe Allen, Dave Prowl, he's just phone call away, so y'all let us know if you have any questions. And it's been great working with Mr. Smith through this, um, and the county staff has just been tremendous. So, we appreciate y'all, we look forward to working together more in the future and, uh, keeping this, this train running.
Alright.
Thank you so much.
Alright. Alright, we will rapidly move forward to our item number two to receive strategic comprehensive plan update uh, by the ACCG intern, uh, Ceeley Devon. Look who's up here. Uh, this one?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Tyne Murray, Chief of Staff. I've had the pleasure this summer of, uh, hosting and working with our ACCG intern. She worked with the county administration on a midterm review of the strategic and comprehensive plans. She has been a joy to work with and I'm sure that this is not the last that, um, we will see of Ms. Ceeley. She certainly, um, has, uh, a lot of potential. And so we're very grateful to the ACCG Civic Foundation for the grant to host her this summer. And I look forward to having your response to her proposal, thank you.
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioner, Ms. Ceeley. Um, so I'm gonna be going over the midterm review for the strategic and comprehensive plan that I did this summer. Um, basically the progress, the overlaps and how it, how it's decided as of July. Um, and so I used to chief it to track the data and interview department directors and review the overlaps between the plans. Um, the goal is to figure out what was working, what wasn't, like what was delayed and how the two plans aligned. Um, so I both over fifteen department heads and directors to assess the project with the tasks that have been assigned. Um, and went to QBRs, this review supports transparency, internal accountability, and helps shape the recommendations for the next planning cycle. Um, so I'm understanding both the plans, the comprehensive plan is a tenure plan, um, that's a long-term vision of the community of Inglewood County. Um, is a state mandated and developed through robust public input, including many community surveys and responses on multiple stakeholder sessions. Um, it addresses eight key areas such as economic development, housing, land use, transportation, resiliency, um, community service, and collaboration with inter-agencies and facilities. Um, and then the strategic plan is a four-year shorter action plan, um, transforms long-term goals and more measurable department-specific initiatives. Um, it's organized on three strategic goals, service excellence, public safety, and, um, community infrastructure. It has over a hundred individual initiatives and activities that attract or achieve it software, and it's discussed in the QBRs. Um, so as I said, I know of many department heads, um, but these are just a couple of examples. Um, each interview consists of figuring out, um, what tasks they were specifically assigned, um, what resources they needed, and if they felt that they'd get it done by the end of December of twenty twenty-six. Um, and so this is a couple overlaps between both the strategic and the comprehensive plan. Um, for transportation and infrastructure, the strategic plan has thirty-three miles of road resurfacing, um, targeted, and they've completed seventeen point seven miles. Um, and then ten thousand liter feet sidewalk hole, and they have completed over four thousand already. Um, and the major projects like Fredericka Road and the Honey Gulch are in and planning is underway, and these are all focused and funded through SLOs. And then with the comprehensive plan, it aligns with BATS and the NTV planning. Um, it focuses on road upgrades, pedestrian safety, and transit access, and it supports multi-modular networks like bikes, trails, and sidewalks, and emphasizes equity and access to underserved areas. And then for economic development, it modernizes zoning for commercial growth, invests in workforce housing to support job creation and promotes employer engagement. And then for the comprehensive plan, it targets industry growth, um, calls for repurposing underutilized commercial areas, and supports incubators, small business support, and industry certifications. And then for housing and equity, the strategic plan incentives, incentivizes zoning updates to increase density, funds workforce housing studies and strategic initiatives, and engages HR and JWSC to explore housing near job sites. And then for the comprehensive plan, it includes condition assessments and mosaic housing study, and it focuses on affordable and resilient housing near transit, and the prioritize prioritizes historic housing preservation and light removal. And then for environmental resilience and emergency preparedness, um, emergency response plans are updated annually and the SER program has trained over sixty citizens. Um, and the stormwater and drainage improvements are prioritized. Um, and then resilience section calls for the CRS certification and sea level rise study, and encourages land preservation for flood mitigation, and supports stronger building, closing, and infrastructure.
See, let me interrupt you just a second. Would you mind closing the door back there for us, please?
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. And then for public engagement and transparency, um, the strategic plan has the redesign of the county website, and then QBR meetings and employee and resident feedback surveys. The comprehensive plan, um, many residents completed community surveys. Um, there are listing sessions and stakeholder meetings that were conducted, and core values reflect community priorities, um, safety, equity, and livability. And then intergovernmental coordination, it, there's a shared project meeting with JWSC in the city of Brunswick, and the emergency and safety coordination through BATS and GDOT. And for the comprehensive plan, it calls for shared zoning boundaries, SCS utility updates, and service alignment, and emphasizes collaboration on riverwalk, transit, and housing policies. So for the strategic plan, it's currently sitting at sixty-seven point ninety-five percent complete. Um, there's a total of two hundred and six action items, seventy-six have been achieved, ninety-nine are on track, nineteen are off track, ten have not been started, and one is at risk. For the first goal, cultivate a culture of service excellence, all four objectives under this goal are currently on track. Fourteen initiatives are progressing as scheduled with four fully completed. Um, before they've been completed, we're updating, streamlining the job application. Um, create easy access to information for citizens through standardized reporting of performance measures, develop interim financial reports accessible to the public, and develop SWOCH project, develop SWOCH reporting to enhance public access to the project information. Um, the Glenwell pro- Glenwell Wellness Program is fully live and offering monthly engagement challenges and pre-counseling. Paycom learning platform has launched many training modules, and employee surveys have been designed, but some are still waiting on getting distributed. So this is a breakdown of a couple of goals inside, um, goal one, so designing the internal external surveys for departments, this is on track. Um, some surveys have been created, but others are waiting on to figure out how to distribute them. Um, and then learning system information is also on track, they've fully launched Paycom with hundreds of courses across the wide array of topics and many available to employees at a self-lead format. Um, and then build a new website, um, this one should be wrapping up quite soon, um, and then maintaining tuition reimbursements. Um, they have completed the first semester of reimbursement for our employees to further their education. Goal two, promote and ensure safe Glen County through community engagement and education preparedness. All five objectives are on track for completion by the end of twenty twenty-six. Um, key initiatives are including the launch, the launch of the SER program, which has issued over thirty-sixty cer- certifications since. Um, monthly volunteer training sessions held by emergency management, new emergency communication platforms that are now operational, um, and animal control. Volunteer training video has been produced and outreach program has expanded to school visits. Um, recruitment and retention incentives structured are under evaluation with HR public safety teams. And then this breakdown, um, develop a volunteer program for all public safety and volunteer opportunities. Um, this one's on track, they have started doing this with EMA, um, and many SER, SER courses, and then the youth academy that was in July, and then the citizens candidate plan for this fall. And then develop a public safety department website and application to expedite information sharing and mapping to community members. Um, this one's on track and will launch with the rest of the website. Um, and majority of the ones inside this one are on track. Goal three, develop a connected community where families can live, work, and play. Um, this goal has a total of twenty-two initiatives, eleven are on track, four have been completed, five are off track, and one has not been started. Um, some highlights have included the sidewalk installation, the road resurfacing, um, the Juvenile Justice Center project. Um, this project is still in the design phase and turning the lines of the project budget. Um, and then the Coast Guard Park renovations, this project was awarded both a horizontal phase and a vertical phase contract. Um, the notice to proceed isn't set till September twenty-second this year. Um, projects like the Selden Park Trail, the ADA Accessible Playground Equipment, and the restroom upgrades are underway and approaching bidding. Um, and then complete the redevelopment program for Old Street and Massey Hill Park. Um, the final, final engineering plans have been complete. Um, Glen County Engineering Services is preparing for an IFB for construction. Um, and then the Safe Street Grant, um, that one is approved and is sitting at ten percent right now. And then the Northland Wright Complex Core Conversion, that one has been achieved and the courts are open. Um, for now, the comprehensive plan, it is sitting at forty-three point ninety-eight percent complete with seventy-seven total action items. Uh, thirteen have been achieved, forty-seven are on track, five are off track, and one is at risk. First is economic development, this one is at seventy-eight point one-three percent complete. Eight action items focus on business growth, job creation, and workforce readiness. Um, the achievements have been the GVAD certification, aeronautics training with coastal pines, and the GICC A. Um, ones that have been achieved have been the online licensing, apprenticeship programs, and educational links. Um, ongoing has been the revitalization of underused properties on Spark Twenty-Five and place making along the US Seventeen corridor. Um, the need is for incubators for new industries and housing near job centers. Um, this is a breakdown of just a couple that have been on there, um, providing the information about educational resources and support available to businesses when applying for business license that has been achieved already, um, and conducting studies to determine the cost and impacts of creating small business development centers. This one is at fifty percent complete, two small business development centers already do exist, um, we need more incubators for more diverse industries. Second is land use, this one is sitting at forty-nine point sixty-seven percent complete and on track. Fifteen major initiatives focus on zoning reforms, smart growth, and conservation. Completed have been the data sharing policy, the GIS mapping, high compliance screening. And in progress are the zoning ordinance update, the SSI overlays, and the gateway planning. The goal is to encourage and infill development and preserve natural areas and expand mixed-use zones. Um, collaboration with JWSC to guide development areas and infrastructure with capacity limits. Um, so this is a breakdown, create a couple, create special area plans for community gateways at I, I ninety-five exit. Um, this one has not been started, it's not currently in the budget, but the staff is exploring funding mechanisms for this area. And then to create a special area plan for St. Simon's Island that includes updated population information and future approved developments. This one also has not been started, specific area plan, um, however, the data traffic, the data collection and traffic studies are in process. For transportation, this one is sitting at thirty-four point five percent complete. Ten transportation initiatives have aligned with BATS and NTV and SWOCH priorities. The achievements have been supporting public transit planning, sidewalk and bike path expansions. In progress have been the Fredericka Road intersection study and the two thousand fifty transportation plan and the trail grant. Um, pending are the safe routes to school and develop developer, developing funding traffic impact guidelines. And the future goal is county-wide complete streets policy to guide multi-modular improvements. And then identify public, potential public-private partnership stakeholders, this one is at fifty percent complete. Um, the city of Brunswick is working on public transit project and provided status updates and partnership findings, um, regularly. And then incorporate road classifications into the Glen County and development approval process. Um, this one is at ten percent complete and is incorporated into the ordinance rewrite, which is still ongoing. Resiliency is at a fifty-two point five percent complete with six action items in it. Um, these six action items are on climate change, flooding, and emergency preparedness. Debris removal contracts are active, RLLA and hazards mitigation plans are in place. Staff, staff is pursuing the CRS certification and evaluating the FJ towards causeway improvements. Um, coordinating with DNR and Land Trust, um, for land preservation to reduce flood risks. And then pending the green infrastructure expansion and stronger flood plan regulations. Review building and re- development land development codes to determine if additional regulations are needed to better protect buildings from wind flooding due to coastal storms and sea level rise. Um, this one is at sixty percent complete. Glen County regulations run parallel to the international and state building and residential codes. Um, so the building officials are in the process of getting building inspectors CRS certified. And then request that GDOT performs a study to determine if improvements are needed to make, are needed to be made to the FJ towards causeway. Um, this one has not been started, this action has not been pursued in the past, and so staff will collaborate with GDOT on this item. And then intergovernmental and inter-agency coordination, there are six projects aimed to improve in cooperation with Brunswick and regional partners. Um, shared infrastructure and planning through JWSC coordination meetings. Um, and the VOC supports downtown revitalization by Bay Street improvements. Um, Riverwalk Phase One is delayed, the stakeholders include Port Authority and the Doris Properties. And the future needs are SCS utility boundary revisions and coordinating zoning districts. Um, first one was work with the city of Brunswick to support downtown revitalization. This one is at a fifty percent completion rate, the transit compensation has been had. Um, the county's been going to First Fridays and supporting the DA, DOT efforts for Bay Street Roundabout. And then consider partnering with the Brunswick for building inspections and planning services, um, this one has not been started. And then partner with the city of Brunswick to implement the Riverwalk Phase One has been off track. The Doris Properties and Port Authorities may need to be added as stakeholders for this effort. County facilities and services and infrastructure. Twelve initiatives improving water, sewer, drainage, and recreation transparency. Um, completed have been the capital improvement plan, storm drain, storm drainage recovery for beach crossovers. Ongoing are the Coast Guard Park, Park Project, Regulatory Master Plan, and Water Access Studies. The needs are the stormwater utility plan, drainage design, the senior center in the beach access upgrades, and the website design and outreach efforts are under completion. So the develop capital improvements program, plan has been achieved and fully updated. And then perform a study to establish stormwater utility in the coordination with the Brunswick Stormwater Utility Program. This one has not been started, committee members indicated that there are no need, there are no plans to engage the city of Brunswick to coordinate for the creation of the stormwater utility program. Natural, historic, and cultural resources, there are five action items, um, that cover green space, cultural sites, and tree canopy and beach management. Um, in progress are the green space plan tied to the master trails and plan in East Coast Greenway. Tree protection efforts are active on islands and mainland, recommendations are under review, and proposed beach safety and usage policies are in development. Um, develop a county green space plan to identify and prioritize natural areas for future protection. Um, this one is at twenty-five percent complete, um, it may be incorporated with the master trails plan, escaping is being developed for the RFP. And then review the potential to preserve county control of the canal and invest its rehabilitation as a part of the green space plan. This one is at risk, a couple of the questions were, um, the options to create a GIS layer or overlay district to outline the frambers of the canal and additional usage. Lastly, housing, there are four major initiatives focusing on housing quality, affordability, and resilience. Completed are housing inspection code, housing inspection, code enforcement, and white removal programs. In progress is the mosaic housing study and countywide housing condition assessment. Um, the goal is to expand rental stock, historic preservation, and incentivize in film development. And the collaboration with JWSC for utility capacity and exit forty-two improvements. Work with the BGWSC to identify areas where the capacity is to serve moderate to high-density pro- high-density residuals of developments. Um, this one is a hundred percent complete and ongoing. And then administer regulations to ensure housing quality per adopted codes through a comprehensive inspection program. Um, this one also has been achieved and is ongoing. Overall, Glen County is making meaningful progress across both plans. The strategic plan is driving near-term action, while the comprehensive plan provides a clear vision for the future. As the county continue to focus on cross, cross-department coordination, finding solutions, and the community engagement will be the key into hitting the goal of twenty twenty-six. Um, thank y'all for your time, I'll have to take any questions.
Alright, Ceeley, thank you, uh, you can catch your breath a minute, maybe we need to get rid of all this water.
Okay, thank you.
But, very good, thank you, and I, I really believe that this shows the progress that we're making, uh, here in the county and, uh, to, to execute our strategic plans in, in conjunction with the comprehensive plan. So, I think great progress has been made and, uh, hopefully, hopefully we'll get a good report card on that. So, uh, Commissioners, any, any comments?
I'd like some information more on why some of the projects are being delayed. I know that you may mention that.
Yeah, so from what I had gone, a lot of the delays.
You don't have to do this now.
Okay, okay.
But, uh, I would like to know why we have some delays in some of these projects. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would like to, um.
Mr. Vice Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would like to thank this young lady for an excellent presentation.
Thank you.
I just, I just, I just want y'all to know, I'm actually, uh, we only have one computer between Bill and I, so I'm, I'm on with him. But I, I, that was, that was a great presentation, thank you.
Well, I was gonna tell her the Lord was speaking, but, uh. But yes, it, it was.
It, it, it really was an excellent presentation. Um, would like to know, uh, more about the Resiliency Housing. I think I, I saw that in there.
Yes.
But also, the, just comment in general, I think, uh, about Bill and his team and the transparency that, uh, we have. I think the public has, um, more information than I've ever seen, um, since I've been here twelve years. Um, and, 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 uh, and that's due to Bill's leadership, um, we, we, I guess we get some credit for that too, but, um, I, I just wanted to thank him and his team, uh, for that. And, and you really demonstrated that in this presentation, that was the first thing that I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Seeley, and I want to add as well, it's very, very thorough and very, uh, quick. You did an excellent job. And, um, just quick, now to put you on the spot, what was there, what was the biggest thing that you saw in our strategic plan that kind of maybe surprised you, or you were like, wow? Or maybe something that you would be interested in getting into? I like to hear from the younger folks to see how, you know, the presentation was fantastic, but what, what come across to you as like a, um, maybe a challenge that all of us need to hear?
From everything that I gathered, I think one of the biggest challenges for everyone was updating it and achieving it. Um, and then also wanting having the staff to make sure everything was done on time. There are so many initiatives inside of the strategic plan, and I mean, some have small detail, while others are like really big projects. And so I think overall, I think those are probably the two biggest challenges that I saw.
Thank you.
I'd just like to ask, could we have, um, the slides in the presentation, could we receive those via email?
One other thing, are we making you an offer?
She's a senior, okay, she got time.
No, sorry, thank you. Your, your goodness, all right, well, thank you so much.
Thank y'all.
And, and you did it very timely, uh, maybe we could inform Mr. Clements on how short this presentation is. But I know we, we prolonged him, I'm just picking at it, so, thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
All right. All right, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Item number three today is to receive, uh, receive a preview, uh, from the county's new website design. And, uh, and Brittany is gonna introduce it, I guess Kim, you're gonna, you're gonna add to.
Yes.
All right, so thank you very, very much.
All right, good afternoon, Commissioners, Brittany is your Communications Director. The moment we've all been waiting for is officially here. Our new site, our new website will roll out tomorrow, August twentieth, and it's mobile-friendly, it's intuitive, it's easy to navigate, and most importantly, it's easy, it's, uh, accessible to all users, so, of, of all abilities. Um, it's built with the end user in mind, so, and I can say that personally with, uh, full confidence. Um, I've been on the job here for six weeks now, and I can tell you I've been in the process of website redesign. Two of them now, since last September, and I can honestly say that this really is built with the end user in mind, um. So on the first day when I came on, I jumped in with both feet, with no training and no directions, and I was able to navigate the back end with ease. So I know that the public-facing side, as you can see here, is gonna be just as easy for the, uh, user for me. So this project was led under the direction of Ms. Kim Ransom, who has dedicated countless hours to ensuring our site reaches the final, uh, product that you see here today. So I would be remiss if I did not publicly thank the individuals who worked tirelessly to get this site across the finish line as well. They include Avery Dahl, Christina Redden, James Manning, Morgan Scott, Michael Lees, and Tony Moran. Uh, they've done an incredible amount of work over the last five weeks that I've been here, and I'm just proud. So without further ado, I'm just gonna turn it on over to the Kim.
Before you get started, is there a senior citizen button on there?
No need, huh?
No need for it.
Hello, and good afternoon, Commissioners, Mr. Smith. The moment we've all been waiting for, especially me. For fifteen months, we have worked tirelessly, tirelessly to get here, and now we are here. Previously, I've shown you a preview, but let's take an actual look on the website and what we're, what the public will see first thing in the morning. We have our feature services here. Our feature services include some of our most frequents, frequently used links, such as Seek, Click, Fix, our Open Records, of course, our careers, boards, and committees. This feature here, our I Want To section, I think we will get a lot of love for this, this section. Folks are coming to the website to do particular services, find information. Here, they can do just that, I want to apply for a building permit. I want to pay a seating ticket, register to vote, report an issue, such as Seek, Click, Fix. They can click here on this button, and it will take them to the page to report their issue. I'd like to also quickly show you our main landing pages. We have identified that Glen County is a community where we would like families to live, work, and play, so we mimic that here with our new redesign. The Government Page highlights our government-level entities such as our boards, our departments, our executive leadership, the Tax Commissioner, Property Appraiser, as well as our Courts, Sheriff's Office, and the Coroner's Office. Can't forget about the Lord Institute. Our Live Landing Page includes various resources resulting for living here in the county. So if you need to contact Customer Service, there is a quick primary button where you can contact Customer Service. Visit the Ricken Parks Department Page has all of their cool services that they offer, such as youth sports, pools, beaches, campgrounds, marinas, we were just talking about marinas, public parks, activities, et cetera. Let's go back up to... The Work Landing Page provides resources for folks that want to work with the county or work for the county. We have information on bidding, contacting Customer Services. We also have our future services, such as planning zoning, building permits, licensing compliance. And of course, if you would like to work with us, quick link to our Human Resources Department that provides information on career opportunities. Here in the footer, you will see the same landing pages that are at the top. These are our main navigation items, our Government, our Live Page, our Work Page, and our Play Page. The Play Page is probably my favorite, 'cause I like to have fun. We start here on the Play Page with registering for activities, this is our Ricken Park Registration Portal. We have countless clinics, classes, activities that our citizens can sign up for. We wanted to put that front and center. We also have a Beach Access Map. Our GIS team, they build maps every day, they're GIS, that's what they do. And so I wanted to bring that map front and center, our Beach Access Map will give us, give our citizens a quick glance at points where they can access the beach here in Glen County, oh, excuse me, I'll make times. We also have feature services, our feature services are found on every Department Page. So services that are related to that department, they will be found very easily on each Department Page, as well as the Landing Page. Here, we're still on Play, so these feature services are all related to Play. They will be respective on the Work and Live Page, as well as the Department Page. And last but not least, I know that we've had some disconnect with our citizens not being able to contact us. We have also included a Contact Us Form that will, that, it will email our con, our Customer Service Team immediately, and they can send it out to the departments or the points of contact. At the top, I skipped this, we have a, we have, uh, Select Your Language. We want to make sure that we're including all of our citizens that speak different languages. In our calendar, I think this calendar is phenomenal, we have the ability to list items in chronological order by the date. We can also do a view for a month, which gives us all of our items here in this view, or by the day. Our calendar can now be filtered with meetings, events, and departments. This gives us the ability to be, be completely open and transparent with our citizens, just like you mentioned, Commissioner Booker. That's all I have, any questions?
First blush is, looks great.
Thank you.
And just a little navigation that you did is, I, I look forward to using it, it's not clunky like our other ones is. I'd be glad to sunset that one today.
Yes.
But, uh, this looks really, really good, and it looks very user-friendly.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mr. Vice Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May, may I also congratulate Kim and Brittany on a great job on the website? I know, I know the chore of the job it's been, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I would echo that as well, uh, I have seen you working tirelessly on it, and, uh, it, it looks like a great job. Uh, Brittany, I don't know if we have, uh, recognized you enough coming on, new, new member to our team, but we want to thank you for joining, uh, Glen County Government, and, and we look forward to all that you're gonna bring, bring to us here in Glen County. Kim, again, just thank you, uh, and, and all the people, Michael, and Tanya, and all the people on the team that I didn't see working on it on a regular basis, um, our, our heartfelt thanks. This has been long, long needed, and, uh, and we're finally at that threshold, so, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. First thing in the morning, checks out on the first feature.
Thank you. Misses, anything else? Mr. Attorney, the need for executive session, we got out of here in a reasonable time after all. So, uh, move to adjourn. I'll have a motion to adjourn, second, all in favor? That is unanimous, I think we're ready, thank you, and have a good day. That is unanimous. I think we're ready. Thank you and have a good day.